March, color guard, hope, left face.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right face, forward, march.
Please be seated. Okay, next on our agenda, do I have a motion to enter closed session as listed on the agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Cook, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Milligan, in discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
We'll be in closed session, so I'm gonna meet and back to order. Okay, any action from closed session, do we have a motion to approve personnel?
I make a motion to approve personnel.
Motion to approve personnel is second?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, in public address, Ms. Lori Shipson. Welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Miller, would you like to share that with you if I may? My name is Lori Shipson, I am a lifelong resident of Brunswick County. I live in Bolivia, North Carolina, at 1208 George II Highway Southeast. The reason I'm here tonight is to give notice to the school board that there is an organization that is requesting rezoning for a 45-bed men's drug and rehab facility to be built almost directly across the street from Bolivia Elementary School. I'm concerned about that because of the proximity to the school and I'd like to request that the school board look into this, find out more about this organization and to request that you attend the meeting after your meeting here tonight to hear what they have to say and to give us all more information. You know, are there guidelines in place to protect our children and what is the next step in order to prevent them from moving forward with rezoning tonight? And just ask that they table it until we can find out more about it and I feel like every parent at Bolivia Elementary School should have the opportunity to hear what's going on. They've been kind of super secret on the notice. It doesn't give any information about who is requesting the application, why they're requesting the application and if they're so on board with what they're doing then why not share it? And that's my concern. The meeting will be happening at the Bolivia Fire Department. 6:30 this evening is for question and answers and they are supposed to be voting at 7:00 PM tonight, so that's where we'll be headed next. And I know that there are a group of concerned citizens that will be there voicing their opinions and concerns as well. Do you have any questions for me?
No ma'am, thank you, appreciate it. Anybody have any questions?
Have a seat there.
Presentation, oh, Bud Thorson's gonna make a presentation, really?
Olaf in the flesh.
Hold on just a minute. Will our attorney read the...
Yes sir.
Oh, this is gonna be fun.
Yes sir, Mr. Chairman, pursuant to Board Policy 7100, Mr. Thorson, you're limited to 30 seconds.
Yeah. Thank you Attorney Green. Mr. Chairman, thank you, it was a wonderful meal out there. Myself and Commissioner Cook, we actually went back in the doors ourselves.
Good.
Well, I'm so glad you did.
That's one last meal I have to fix.
And I will tell you, I had wanted to have the last meal with Superintendent Tubbs and that was my intention, of course you all had to go into closed session and spoil that then. And I ended up having to eat with Mr. Cook. We had a good conversation, we solved all the issues here in the county.
But you know, closed sessions are much quicker now.
We had all. Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening, sir, good evening.
Superintendent Tubbs, Attorney Green. You know, it's somewhat strange to be on this side of the podium because it's a heck of a lot less stressful than that. Never in my 60 years of living in this county have I witnessed such devastation and disruption that this past hurricane has caused. And I'm telling you, y'all, y'all got your hands full, which I never come to this. Colonel Tubbs, I applaud you in delaying your retirement for another month to help guide the school district through this difficult time. Board members first and foremost, I want to thank you for allowing me to serve on the Brunswick Community College Board of Trustees as one of your appointees. Having served in public education from K through 12 for several years, now I'm able to serve at a higher education with the community college and it's an honor. It is somewhat different serving with 12 members instead of five because you've got 12 different personalities. But you know, all 12 of those trustees, they do have the community college and the students in their heart and their best interest. Having attended my first meeting, I was placed on the finance committee and the liaison between the Board of Education and the college. It is my pleasure to keep you informed and continue the great relationship between the Brunswick County Schools and the community college. And we have such a great relationship right now. Some of you may know that Dr. Adams will be leaving January of next year, so I will be a part of hiring the next new leader at the community college. I've been told there are several applicants that have applied. Colonel Tubbs is on a committee of 12 to narrow the applicants down to 12, to five to six for the full Board of Trustees to select the next new VCC president. And with that being said, with Superintendent Tubbs leaving at the end of this month, it's imperative that we hire the right person, not only with the BCC president, but superintendent of schools, to keep the relationship that we have between each other. We hired an ELA cert firm, similar to the North Carolina School Board Association, to go through 80 applicants. There was 80 applicants that applied for that position at BCC. That committee, no, ELA narrowed it down to 11 applicants for a 12-member panel committee to narrow it down to five. That 12-member committee is made up of four trustees, four from BCC faculty, and four community leaders. Those community leaders are Superintendent Tubbs, County Manager Anne Hardy, Novant Hospital, and those are hospitals. So we actually have a committee that's going to narrow it down to five for the full Board to actually interview, the Board of Trustees. And we will start this interviewing the trustees for those five that they narrowed it down to at the end of the month. So I just wanted to let you all know that. On another note, the Saks team is coming to BCC next week and you all know how important that is for education to be accredited. Just keep your fingers crossed and hope we do well, which I'm sure we will because we have an excellent team and I'm new at BCC as a trustee, but we have an excellent team of faculty there under the leadership of Dr. Adams. And in closing, I just want to thank all of you for what you do for public education here in Brunswick County. I know firsthand it's a difficult job. I know it is, but I applaud you and what you're doing. And again, it's my commitment as a trustee that you appointed me, that I will keep you all informed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thorson. Good luck next week for the accreditation.
We'll do well. I'm telling you, I stopped by the community college on the way here today and stopped by about 4 o'clock and I reviewed those 11 and we had some excellent candidates. And I didn't even get through, just skimming through them, I'm telling you, we're blessed to live in a county where people want to come to live.
Absolutely.
Any questions, board members?
I want to comment that as a board, we felt you were a perfect person for us to recommend for BCC because of your experience here and we just want to make sure that that connection continues and we were, in the case of you being in relation to that, we thought that was the perfect scenario for us and for BCC and to have you to help be the liaison between us and their board. So we appreciate you being willing to do that.
Yeah, I'm willing and able as of right now and I take the appointment very seriously and I intend on fulfilling it to the fullest.
Mr. Chairman, I have one question. It sounds like you intend to do this on a regular basis or at least a frequent basis?
As requested by the Board of Education.
You would like us to request it?
Yes, either as a board or individually or however you want to do it.
We'll see the first Tuesday of every month at 6:00.
And now that you know that you're perfect.
Yeah, you're perfect for that.
You know that you're perfect.
We'll feed you.
I'm not gonna prolong this, but it's an honor to serve as a trustee in higher education. I'm closing another chapter in my book.
Well, we know you're a cheerleader for both.
I am and I'll continue to do it for, and lifelong resident of Brunswick County, I'll continue to fulfill my obligation.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving right along, approval of the meeting agenda, do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion approved, second?
Second.
Second, any discussion, all in favor? Aye. Approval of minutes from July 24th, operations August 7th, regular meeting, August 28th curriculum, September 10th, emergency conference call meeting, and September 24th, emergency call meeting. Do we have a motion to approve those minutes?
Make a motion that we approve those minutes.
Have a motion by Ms. Milligan, has a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Cook, in discussion, all in favor? Consent items, any motion to approve as listed?
Make a motion we approve, now a second.
Motion and a second, in discussion, all in favor? Action items, first on the action item is the alternative accountability model participation.
And Mr. Chairman, would we convene that? Have a copy of the memorandum back under section, under section four of the memorandum. In looking at alternative schools, there's three options that we can use and the progress that they make.
Yeah, thank you Colonel Tubbs. Amanda did the legwork on this one for us, but we're down to the three options we have to choose. You have to select one of the three. The first option is they can participate as any other school does in the state. That's a bit challenging for an alternative school with the programs they have in place. The second option is one that's called progress model, it's a progress monitoring. That's the one we've done every year with the alternative school. The vast majority of alternative schools across the state does that. That looks at their achievement, 20%, growth 60%, and then they get 20% for persistence. So that's the one that we're actually, we're recommending that you approve the option B, the alternative school's progress model. It's the one we've been doing for all the years.
I move that we approve option B.
Have a motion to approve option B, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion, all in favor? Okay, and right behind that tab and number four is your parent advisory council list as presented. And I know I was contacted by my principal, so... Do we have any questions about that or comments?
Just need to get some for the coast.
Yeah.
You can always add them.
Yeah, do we have a motion to approve as presented?
I make a motion to approve the parent advisory council member's list as presented.
Have a motion, Ms. Milligan, second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Cook, all in favor? Aye. All right, Ms. Cahill, budget amendments, state two, capital three, and capital four.
Good evening board members. The first one is state number two, and this is to appropriate funds for, from the state for driver salaries, bus drivers, this allotment came over later than the other state dollars. And then also technology funding, these are the fines and forfeitures that comes from the state. They had actually some excess fines and forfeitures that were received by the state from prior years and so this was a one-time gift, if you will, a windfall that they were excited about.
There's no gifts, Ms. Cahill. They'll want it back eventually.
The next one is capital number three. This is as we are in the beginning of the new fiscal year, we bring over the carryover amount for capital because those projects do roll over as well as adjusting the budgets that may have been over, not expanded, but they were brought over at a higher amount that need to be brought back down based on expenditures that occurred in the current year but that belonged in the prior year of cruel taxes. And then last but not least, capital number four. This is where we are requesting appropriation of $3 million from the excess after long funds that reside with the county to use by the schools to aid in the effort of the hurricane recovery costs. Ms. Rutledge is going to be giving you an update on where we are with that recovery, but it does appear that we are going to need to fund some of this through our available resources and those are starting to roll in, so we are requesting appropriation today.
Now, is that from our fund balance or is that from the capital money from the county health force?
Yeah, the excess after long funds.
Okay. You want a motion to approve all three?
How much is in that fund over there?
Five million for now, 1.7 of which we are reserving for advanced projects and the next round of fund projects.
Okay.
Is that including the 1.7 we were sending back on the previous?
I guess that has been paid back.
Do we have a motion to approve state two, capital three, capital four?
So moved.
All in favor? And we'll hear more from Ms. Rutledge, I guess, about the insurance, FEMA?
Yes.
That kind of thing? Okay, number four, appointment to the Brunswick County Substance Abuse and Addiction Commission. I think we already done that.
We didn't have the meeting last month.
Oh, we didn't have the meeting. Still in storm mode, I guess. Yet, do we have a motion?
I make a motion that we appoint Ms. Cook for to fill this position as described.
Have a motion to appoint Ms. Cook, do I have a second? Second, any discussion, all in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I recuse myself. Okay.
All right, discussion, update on condition of facilities and school opening. That is on everybody's mind. Do we need to switch sides of the table or something?
Just see all this.
Is it in here? It's in here? Oh, okay.
You're not gonna fall asleep, are you?
No sir, no. I'm just waiting on, waiting on the info. I'm not too good off the cuff if you don't know that already.
Well, I know you've been putting in a lot of time. We understand you've been spending a lot of whole days at your job.
We're ganging on it. You guys have a copy of it, right? Can I borrow some of it?
I've got an update.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, it's all right, I can just, I can use this.
Let's make a comment.
Okay. You all want me to wait, you want me to go ahead?
I'll go ahead.
Go ahead.
Okay. All 19 schools in some way were impacted by the hurricane. Our best estimate today is $3.3 million in damages and we should expect more once the roofing and mechanical reports are received. We have about half of the evaluations of the roof and there are things that you would expect. Blown over mechanical units, objects that penetrated membranes, penetrated metal, metal that was, some metal that was peeled back, just debris that was blown on top of the roof that blocked some drains. And so we will have, we'll have that complete report sometime before the end of the week. We will be able to recoup some of the, some of the cost through FEMA. Some will be covered through the insurance, but not all will be covered by FEMA and insurance. Some work, we didn't wait to get bids, which is required by FEMA. We proceeded with the work and I don't know how that's gonna turn out.
Yeah, but, I mean, we got kids out of school for 19 days, what do they expect us to do? And I think early on, we were told to go forward with repairs immediately by FEMA or our insurance companies. So somebody's gonna have to cough it up.
Right. As I said, sir, don't know how that's gonna turn out.
Mr. Green, you need to pay attention here.
Don't know how to get into that. We think the schools will be ready for students by October the 8th. Some schools are ready now and teachers can return to those schools. I think they're slated to come back Thursday. Some schools won't be ready till Saturday and a couple of schools might not be ready till Sunday. But we think they'll be ready. The, we've got a, we've got a large number of drywall guys. They've already started putting drywall back in, all the mechanical's fixed. So we've made a lot of, a lot of progress from where we were two days after one of the worst of the hurricane.
So are you, Cedar Grove and Town Creek and Supply were, were?
Bolivia.
Bolivia, so is Bolivia ready and now, what's not ready? Sheet Rock, Town Creek?
Sheet Rock, Town Creek, Sheet Rock, Cedar Grove. Sheet Rock at Bolivia. There are eight roof drains at Bolivia that we already had planned to fix. We didn't get them fixed before the hurricane, that was bad timing. But we're gonna leave those open and so that work starts Thursday. We may get all of those closed up by the end of Sunday, but we're not sure. But Bolivia will be ready, all the floor coverings in and all mechanical is, we had a lot of mechanical that was damaged and so we got all that worked.
Well, so you're gonna have a whole different set of dust once you do the sheet rock again. So, I mean, is that gonna give you time to, once you sand the sheet rock, is it?
Probably won't get a chance, it'll go rough in.
Well, that's fine, that's fine.
And then we'll come back on weekends after that.
Okay.
Yeah, we're gonna, it'll be, it'll be taped and bedded and that's it.
That's, I'm good with that.
And at night, we're gonna fix it, paint it, and they'll clean up as they go.
Yes.
So this will be after the school day?
Yes ma'am. I mean, you can make people finish that stuff, you know, wet or damp and it reduces the dust, but it also slows the work down, so we'll just have to balance, see, see how much a mess that we make and can't clean up at night. The HVAC, we had approximately 15 large rooftops and smaller rooftops were damaged. The HVAC is now operational in all areas of all schools. That was a lot of work and so we're feeling pretty good about that.
Were most of those units salvaged?
Yeah, they're salvaged, they're up and they're running but we're gonna claim that all the insurance claimed.
And they're gonna be replaced eventually?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, some of them are new.
Right.
Southport.
Yeah, what about the one in Southport?
It was fastened down, right, it just sheared off. There were about 18, 18, that thing was screwed down with 18 bolts and it just, it sheared them right off, it just flipped that thing over. And we didn't expect it to run, but thank goodness it did because you can't go get those things off the shelf. So we're lucky, we don't know how long it's gonna run, it's running right now. And the hole's closed up. Operations are working this weekend to help teachers get ready. Air has been sampled and cleared at 13 and 19 schools and we're re-sampling today and tomorrow.
Okay.
Some schools will require more drywall work, we've already talked about that. Largest expenses to date are drying the schools out and removing wet material. The shelters, schools that were used as shelters or schools used to house volunteers have been cleaned with, it's kind of a three-step sanitization process and that is almost complete. That was pretty expensive, but we had, felt like we needed to do it. And the schools with the most damage are Town Creek, Cedar Grove, and Bolivia. So...
And we've already got the floor back in, it's supplied in 19 classrooms, don't you?
Yes, that's back in, floor's back in, Southport, Southport's, Southport's kind of, it's ready. Union's ready, Jessie Mae's pretty much ready, I mean...
Lockemaw's fine.
Yeah, Lockemaw's good. So those three schools, the high schools, they had, they had a lot of leaks, leaks that we just didn't have before. And that's gonna be the whole wind-driven rain debate that we, we have with the insurance. And Bolivia, Bolivia, we knew we needed a roof and we're gonna rearrange some stuff in the bond and move it up, but we didn't make it. So there's gonna be major roof repairs there and they may be so expensive that we just, we need to move back, maybe some floor tile, ceiling tile, maybe some bathroom renovations in the bond and just move the roof replacement forward.
But that doesn't solve the Town Creek and Cedar Grove roof problems.
No, no sir. And because that's, it's, it's undefined right now.
Could lead to some litigation?
Yes.
Okay. I understand.
Yeah.
That's kind of where it is.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Any questions?
You've been a very busy lady.
Yeah, there's...
Thank you.
Yeah, not just me, but you know, yes ma'am, thank you.
There's a lot of nights I talk to see late at night about fuel or air conditioners or something. Yeah, but I mean, your whole, your whole crew.
Yeah, thank you, that's great.
Thank you.
And we've had, you know, we've had help too.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right.
And Mr. Chairman, as we move forward, I will tell you that there is a document that put out with the Supervisors Association, DPI collectively, with a listing of areas' possible needs and of schools following our district that the other ones that were impacted by the hurricane, or whereby... but whereby, if classroom teachers and those individuals that need things, we were listed in this document and across the state, the state, all the LEAs are working this for all of us. And there are, we are lucky compared and speaking with a number of the counties that are here.
Okay, the draft about school calendar, who's, what rates?
Good evening, board members.
Good evening.
The, um, high school presidents met here last Friday to deliver a draft of some calendar revisions due to Hurricane Florence. And you can see that the current calendar in front of you is our current calendar, um, that we started the year with. And for the draft, we're gonna go through and give you the, um, revisions that were, that came out of that meeting. As you can see, October ni- October twenty-ninth was originally an early release date. That has now been changed to a full student day. We moved to December, December twenty-first was an undesigned workday. That too has been changed to a full student day. Moving to January, the third and the fourth were undesigned and a designated workday. They too have been changed to full student days. And what the major change would be as far as moving the end of the first semester, um, the end of that grading period would be January thirtieth, which pushes our testing, of course, after, um, Christmas break. The way this calendar is set up currently in its draft form gives seventy-seven days to the first semester and seventy-seven days to the second semester. You'll see that we have annual leave days, uh, those days that are in a square. There are ten of those that we have, and those ten are required by the state, uh, for the calendar. So we've met those ten, which also means that we can't take from those annual leave days. Um, so this is the draft that we have currently, and this gives us back, um, four, well, three and a half, four days of instruction. As Mr. Tubbs said earlier, the legislation that came out today will forgive, um, the days that we missed, but of course, we're looking to recruit as many instructional days or instructional hours as we possibly can. Um, so that's currently where we are, and this is all, of course, hinging upon the successful opening, reopening of school on Monday.
Annual leave days. Uh, I know the state is allowing teachers to be paid for this, this time. Can you move annual leave days into those days that are already been missed?
We... Can't that have already been missed?
Yes.
I don't think so, according to the legislation. Doesn't address that. I can find out. They would, I think they would have to have already been established in the calendar, um, as those days, not days that they were out.
I think in previous, um, weather events, that's in fact what we've done. We've kind of moved some days around, so long as you still have some days, I think you would be okay, but because the legislation actually forgives those days, um,
That's the problem.
That's the problem.
So you still have to have the ten days identified, plus the forgiven days?
Right.
Or forgiven.
Then you're not forgiving if you, if you're mov- if you're...
If you're moving, taking those.
Well, obviously, our students will be impacted, missing nineteen days of instruction. Um, I think this board should do whatever they can to make up some of that time, regardless of what the legislature has said about forgiving, because our students are the ones suffering, I mean, uh, teachers were taken care of pay-wise and all that kind of stuff. The people who are suffering are out of this is the lack of instruction for students. So, to me, um, November sixth and February eighteenth and March eighteenth are automatics to be, for students to be in school.
And that would give us three more days added to the three and a half.
And I realize that the reason you, you did that was possibility of snow days or ice days. But I don't think we can deal with that now. We have to deal with our current situation.
Unless it should come to fruition, and then we would deal with it at the time.
Yeah. So there's three days sitting there.
We would have with that would be to move those one days.
And I, I know the election, the election people don't want school on the sixth of November, but do we have a choice?
Um, in the, in the court of election, do you have a copy of the? They addressed something about the election in the, uh, I'll have to pull it out.
In the calendar law?
As if you couldn't.
The children couldn't be on campus, or?
I'll have to look at it.
So, um, Dr. Retsch, what you're, what I'm hearing, I think, is that if we could move that February and March work date, um, to the end, because May thirty-first is the current last day of the school year, right?
Correct.
Okay, so if we could do that, um, that would alleviate some of their concern about instructional hours for the students and, and their preparation and foundations and those kinds of things academically.
Correct. We'd be glad to make those revisions if those wishes, wishes of the board.
Let's give us six, six days, Mike.
Six and a half.
Six, 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 six. So you may be able to move the sixth. But we, uh, we're...
Between now and...
Between now and...
Yeah, they're required. Oh. What's the pleasure, board, on those two?
Going to make some motions over there.
Some motion. We have a motion on those two, or?
I'd imagine that revised these, including the information we just spoke of.
Including the two days, including February eighteenth and March eighteenth as regular student days. Will they be in movement with November sixth? Two schools that's related.
Affix. Said Belleville and, um...
Can, can we do this? We, we have committee meetings on the twenty-third. Could we get with Sarah, the board of elections, to talk to her about that? And then we can decide on the sixth.
I was telling Ms. Milligan, we've got those committee meetings, and we can make that decision on the sixth. And Dr. Erble, we have, we know we have two schools that are impacted, Belleville and I guess, um...
Well, Belleville is the largest precinct.
Yeah.
The largest precinct.
And we already have the experience there that it was a disaster.
It is to three years.
VW Belleville for the elections. Right, VW.
VW, yes.
Okay, they moved Sunset Harbor, yeah. Can we have some conversation with just board of elections first, and?
Well, I think, um, I don't see the point of speaking to the board of elections. We, as a board of education, need to make a decision whether we, whether we want the school. And I realize there's a lot of traffic at Belleville, but you've got eighteen other schools in the school system that aren't affected by that the same. So, and we're missing nineteen days of school minus the two or three that identified, so... I see no point in waiting to make that decision.
Well, the law allows them to use the school. But now, you said something about legislation has addressed...
I think, I think that was with, um, people who were signing up to the not voting precincts and, and, I think that's still at the county level, working with the board of elections in the school system, or whoever they're working with. Fire Department, Board of Elections, that sort of thing.
I mean, I, I, I agree with what you're saying, Ed, I do. But, well, how many people voted at Belleville?
I don't know the numbers off the top of my head, but one of the things that was clear the last time it happened, uh, was the day was chaotic for both voters and students and staff. I mean, you couldn't get in or out. People had to park across the street, um, with wheelchairs. I, it was just not, uh, not workable. And I, I could, wouldn't imagine this to be any different. Um, it's a general, uh, I mean midterm election, so it may not be as bad, but statistically, um, Election Day is a big day at Belleville, every Election Day.
Do we have a motion, or?
I make a motion that, um, we use the three days identified, November, February, and March, to go to school.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
Not second.
Have a second, any discussion?
So now that's including?
That's included, actually.
In addition to the other days that...
In addition to... Correct.
So that would give us six?
Six and a half.
Six and a half.
I really want to support that, but I've noticed the safety and the congestion that that's gonna be. Belleville's could be a nightmare, and I understand that's one of nineteen schools. I just wish that we could talk to them and see if there's any alternative that they could go somewhere else. But I don't... And Virginia Williamson, too. That's a lot of traffic there, too. All right, have a more discussion? A motion and second? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
All opposed?
No.
No.
Do you want to make another motion?
Motion to, um, talk with the...
Include days.
I'll just go ahead and include it.
February and March.
I suggest go ahead and just say February day, I'm telling them March. The February, March days, to include those, and then we talk...
All right, I'd, I'd like to make a motion that we include the February and March date and have discussion with the board of elections as soon as tomorrow for alternatives, if there are any, um, for the November date.
Due to our special circumstances and lots of instructional days for children.
Yes.
Uh, let's put the onus back on them a little bit, even though statutorily they can do whatever they want.
Right.
Uh, I'd, 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 I'd agree with that. And make that motion for you.
Yes, sir. Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
All opposed?
No.
All right, motion carries. All right, North Carolina School Board Association, Fall Law Conference, October seventeenth through nineteenth. Committee meetings, October twenty-third, and the next board of education meeting, November sixth.
It's this election day. Did we get away from that? I guess we have.
No, we're, we're, we're staying there.
Okay, okay.
All right, anybody have anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
You have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second? All in favor?
All right.